I would request a motion to move back into open session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Are there any public appearances? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda, which is special reports, and we have the joint Antarctic school expedition with Juan Batea, and I will let you introduce our student guests.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to come today and for supporting this great project. So, we're here to just give you, before we get deployed, a brief of what we've been doing, what we're gonna do over there, and idea of what we're gonna do when we come back. And I hope you're gonna invite us back when we do come back.
For sure.
If we do come back.
It's probably gonna be warmer there than it is here.
Yes, we're looking forward to being warm in Antarctica. It is definitely gonna be warmer. So today we have the three expeditionaries that are gonna join me. Luke Milfer, Claire Hacker, and Anna Colwell over here, and I'm gonna let them give the talk.
So, I just wanna talk a little bit about our agenda when we're down there. We're going to be collaborating with the students and researchers from Chile to work on two specific science project, research projects. Both are related to botany, and one is going to be studying this plant that you see, which I can't quite pronounce the name of.
Collad Banthas.
Collad Banthas.
I have that on sound right now.
Anyhow, one of the projects is researching how this plant is able to survive in freezing temperatures, what adaptations have allowed it to do so, and so that's one of the main projects we're gonna be doing. The second project also has to do with plants, but it's more about the sources, like how plants have come to live in Antarctica, so it's like the sources of pollen that have traveled through the air. So we're gonna be looking at the types of plants living there and try to determine where that pollen came from. We're also going to be placing different research bases, including those of China and Russia that are in the area where we'll be, and we're going to be, I think, conducting some field studies or observing penguins, of course, and sea elephants. So those are, we're gonna be taking up more time while we're actually in Antarctica. Sorry. Got to show some other picture of Australia. So, we wanted to tell you about a few of the things that we've been doing to prepare before we go. So, in the upper left corner is, well, the upper half, pretty much is, we've been working with the staff from IceCube, which is Antarctic project based at UW Madison, where they're looking at neutrinos, which are subatomic particles that they're using to do astronomy. And so, that's a cosmic ray detector that we're going to take down with us and see what subatomic showers that we'll get while we're in Antarctica. And then, in the bottom left, there's a picture of us with, you know, a representative from Wisconsin Public Television whom we've been working with, and we're gonna create a story while we're there that will be on TV at some point. And another thing we've been doing to prepare is working on our writing skills and blogging, particularly, which is what Luke's gonna show you next.
Yeah, so, we've been, yeah, as Claire was saying, we've been working on our journals, and we have our own website where you can follow different things we've been doing. It has little, like, biographies on each of us, what we've been up to, and it has all our different journals we've been writing about. It's pretty much for every different, like, for the Wisconsin television and the cosmic ray detectors, we always write a journal, and you can see that. And then, there's also an Ask the Team tab you can see up there, and that's something we'd like more people to use, where you can post a question and then we'll post a response to your question. So yeah, this is a good way to follow our expedition in Antarctica.
Well, we're hoping that we can link this webpage from the district webpage, so it would be easier for people to get directly, because it's not there, but the address is quite large. So, I haven't figured out if we're gonna be able to. Last time I went, we didn't have a link, so that would be easier. And as Luke said, we really wanna invite the community to interact with us while we're over there. We don't have internet, but we're gonna have a satellite phone, and we're gonna be able to check through internet and responding to people, which is very, very exciting if people have questions. And definitely, you know, try to ask us and see the journals. I think what we've been doing with the journals, as they explain, is this is practice. You know, we wanted to have, like, videos, taking pictures, and writing, so when we're over there, we're gonna start going, "How do we do this?", and that's what we've been doing. So there's a bunch of already postings there that, if you're curious about the IceCube project or what we've been doing, definitely check them out. We're also working with the idea of having a live event, it's called, so, and that's what happened when we were in Chile, back in Chile. We're hoping to connect through the internet to the schools and be able to have a small presentation by them about what it meant, very fresh, where students can also ask questions. We have the date, but we need to fill out the details, and I'll talk with our principal in the high school, and he's very excited about this, and we wanna see if we can extend this to the other schools, where students will hear the short presentation and be able to ask questions while we're over there, and we'll let you know all the details for example.
Is that kinda like what you did last time, when you had the kids run the auditorium?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that was nice.
That's gonna be soon. And in this, in that time, we did not have live internet, I don't remember, but I was in the boat in an area that we didn't have internet, in the boat we never had. So it was, I was on the phone, on the satellite phone, and we were showing slides. This time, you're gonna be able to see them live and talking, which I think is gonna be better. And definitely, I mean, the collaboration with IceCube has been enormous, they've been very, very helpful. We're trying to, we're gonna present, we're gonna share IceCube while we're over there with the Chileans, because the Chileans are gonna share their individual projects, so this is gonna be all collaboration, and I told them a lot, this, keep all this project in the top here. It's been a good ride so far.
Questions, Dean?
Do you, how much Spanish opportunities will it be speaking?
There's gonna be a lot, a lot of Spanish. We're gonna be working in collaboration with Chilean students and teachers and researchers, so the bulk of communication is gonna be Spanish, and I think that's one of the reasons they chose us in the world, because we're very strong in Spanish. The fact that I'm bilingual, I think that helps. This is a pilot program, we wanna see if we can extend it for many audiences. And we chose people, we look at the characteristics of the students that applied, and we'd look for a cohesive group, not everybody needed to speak Spanish, but we have students that speak it very well, and I think that's gonna be strong enough for us going down there.
When you come back, if it works out, would you guys consider, you know, trying to do something that we can put on cable, so that, again, we can see it, we can link it to the high school, we can put it on so that other people can see it as a cable production, you know, just like you would a school board meeting or a city council meeting? Just 'cause I think that's an opportunity. I'm on the Senior Citizens Foundation, and I know that that's a place where they look to see student activities, and I just think this would be so interesting and it would be neat. You know, you may do it any way you want, maybe you'll do that question and answer session and have Andrew tape that, but if, that, you could just file it in the back and think about that when you come back, it'd be another way for people, for you to reach people and see what you did, which would be neat.
That's a great, great idea. We are invested, when we come back, do an outreach as much as we can in as many ways, so whatever ideas you have on that, we welcome them, we'll develop them. I think it's a great idea, I hadn't thought about that particular venue, but when we come back, we're gonna try to give presentations where they accept us, like in Monona Library, you know, I did one when I came back to us down. It's a good place, you know, families come in, we can do, keep friendly. We're gonna look into the Albuipu Nature Center, we're gonna look into the Children's Museum, which have been receptive in the past. I wanna try to get them into the Institute of Discoveries at UW, which they have a very good program every Saturday, the first Saturday of the month, and we're gonna try to produce as much video and audio to try to reach as many people. I mean, one of our goals is, for them, it's gonna be an amazing experience, but we wanna share that, and try to motivate people, you know, younger students to see this as a, you know, I could be a scientist, I could be me over there, studying the penguins or something else, so we definitely wanna reach out, make it possible to that, and that's a great idea.
If you make, again, if you do that cable thing, you can make a DVD with that, and then you can take that places with you and edit it, and it'd be neat for us to have that.
Yeah. Dean?
Is the film going to be available as you are, during the days, or is it gonna be, have to be edited when you come back, and that sort of thing? I was also thinking that Department of Public Instruction and the group I work with has contact with 2,000 educators in the state that are interested in the international aspect of this and the science piece, and I could give you that contact, that, and I know they work with Wisconsin Public Television, maybe some clips or something like that could be done.
So in terms of lab video, we're not gonna be able to show lab video, because we don't have enough internet except for the satellite phone, and that is very short, things that we can say. We're gonna be posting a few pictures with low resolution, and the text doesn't take that much longer.
Yeah.
The video will. What we're gonna do is we're gonna bring it back, and the person for Wisconsin Public Television, what he wants is to bring kind of a humane story of what we're doing, and he's gonna edit it, but we're still gonna have a lot of footage of our morning science and things like that, we're gonna make available for sure. If we can tap in those, that contact before we leave, so they can share with their students, and then they can contact us through Ask the Team, that thing that we do.
My question to them, why did you apply to this? Not many people apply to go to the bottom of the earth where it's cold and just to see a penguin when you could go to the zoo.
I'll start. Personally, I've always been interested in science, that's what I'd like to study, I'm a senior, so that's what I'd like to study next year, is biology, so I was jumping at the chance to get to see what it's like in the real world. And also, I speak Spanish, not as, not nearly as well as Juan, of course, but I've been really looking forward to an opportunity to get to practice that, so I'm really excited about that aspect, too.
I can relate to Claire, and, 'cause I've always wanted to have a career in science, and not only will this be a really cool trip, but it looked like a good opportunity for me to tell whether this is what I really like to do, and, or like, give me an idea of what it would be like to have a career in science and see, like, the different aspects of it, and what parts interest me the most, and then also to see penguins in the wild and stuff like that, I can't forget that.
Yeah, I mean, the same is true for me, I really have enjoyed science my whole life, and so, I was really excited when I found out that I have the opportunity to go do science in Antarctica. I've had a lot of really awesome experiences with science in the past, and last year I got to go to a semester school for science, but the other aspect that interested me was the cultural exchange part. My two languages are Spanish and Korean, and so, I was really excited, because I've never been to a Spanish-speaking country, so just to be able to go and talk with people.
If you can let me add a little bit about the selection process, I was extremely impressed by, we got 34 applications.
Thirty-four.
And it was extremely hard.
Wow.
To select, because the pool that we had was amazing. I was, I was very happy, I wasn't surprised. You know, I see the students every day in the classroom, once you read the application, I get to know them in a different task, what they do outside of the classroom, all that, and it was very impressive, we have a great solid school. So, if you, you know, man, Luke prepared a video about what is gonna be for us to travel from here down to Punta Arenas, if you have a couple minutes, you can show your.
Sure. And you did send us the link once, I know, 'cause when you sent it, I, all your stories are on there, that was, that was, we'll get that, so it would be good to get that up on the website.
So this, a couple minutes video would be about 30 hours for us.
Yeah. That's nice.
Nice.
We tried to replace the footage with our own footage, which is really cool.
Yeah, that's very nice.
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions for us?
I don't think we'll look forward to reading your, so, to the extent you can, you'll be doing some of that posting as you go along, and we'll look forward to seeing that, and it will be nice if you do a hookup like you did before at the high school, that'd be great.
Perfect. Good luck.
Pretty, very exciting, yeah, good luck, it's, it'll be quite the adventure. Some of you have already had some great adventures, this might top them.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for sharing with us, and we'll look forward to hearing from you when you get back.
Good luck.
Okay, then, the next item on the agenda is the district communication plan, and we have Doreen Dembski here to talk about that with us.
When's the trip?
Uh, February 15th, yeah.
Awesome. And when?
So, thanks for inviting me.
Hello.
It's nice to see you again. Are you still? No, I'm not, I don't have any videos, I don't even have a PowerPoint. I am highly in the developmental stage of this communication plan, so it's premature to put together a big formal presentation. I'm hoping tonight we could discuss some questions that still remain, give you an update on where we're at, and think about some of our next steps. So that's really where I'm at.
And we do have your report, is it on our screen?
So, I'm gonna just talk through some of the major talking points of where we're at, it's probably my display, right?
Would you have a way of pushing through that?
It's not picking it up, which is okay. So it's just, it's not on here.
We have it on our board desk, so.
I'd like to talk through.
I think you have a pretty good slide.
This isn't, yeah, it's okay. I don't wanna say this, this is not my natural, I don't wanna be.
Oh. Is there like a combination? Can you turn on Gary?
You are so smart. Stay around me, okay? So, what I've been doing so far is a lot of asking questions. I asked you a ton of questions in November, if you recall, and since that time, I've met with the leadership team, where I asked more questions, and since then, I've met with every principal individually in their school building and asked more questions. And you know what happens when you ask questions? You ask more questions. And so, what I'm trying to gather is really an effective way that you can proceed with communications that's both sustainable and effective. I think there's a lot of things that I've learned already, but there are certainly more things to learn. So, what have I, I've really come to the conclusion, and I'm proposing this, that we start with three, three sustainable action items, we try to build towards five by January 2015, and we add two more. So three, five, two, and what's not been addressed in any place I've been is internal communication, and I think that would be an omission if we don't. So, haven't heard anything about that anywhere I've talked, which I find very interesting, but if anyone knows me, they know that I'm a big advocate of internal communication. I think it's foundational to your reputation. So I'll be talking, I haven't got a goal in the draft that you received, but I am interested in gathering more information through some surveys for that. One way we are addressing internal communication, and it came up a lot today, I was out in the schools all day, is through our website, we'd like to build an Intranet. And I know that you are considering a human resources position, and that would be a critical person to involve, or a role, someone who takes that role, that would be critical, so it might be a little premature to build that, that piece out, but we have to put it on our immediate future plans. Does that make sense? That's where my brain's kinda going. So, the first three, three things that, and actually, we're working on the website right now, we'd like to build out a community newsletter that I'm calling a magazine, and I'll tell you a little bit about why I'm calling it that, and we'd like to build out your social media strategy. We'd like to start with that right away and just get going. We talked about social media with the principals and the leadership team when we met in January, got some more feedback today about what principals would like to do. Key to social media will be developing some, making sure your policies are in place, making sure that we have a way to feed content, making sure we know who our administrators are, and some pre-planning, proactive planning if we get comments that we need to deal with, so to speak. Generally, it's not that, but, you know, you always wanna be aware that that could happen. So those are the three immediate things. I'd like to next work on e-newsletters with your sites. The sites talked a lot to me about the idea they'd like to move away from print and into the digital world, so I know there's training there, and I know that we have to talk very specifically to who does what and how, and I do propose that we work on some surveys, and I do think that's one of the board activities that I'd like to suggest, that would be a board role, and I'd like to suggest that we look at interviewing parents, sorry, through surveys, parents, staff, and community. That's a longer-term goal, but I do think that's important. And as I was listening there, this is kind of reflective of how my life's been here at Monona Grove, I hear all these good things, and I keep throwing them in here, I know we wanna do videos, and, you know, as I drive around, I see a lot of community places where we need to get your materials into, and today I noticed your libraries, and I heard today up here, speaking about doing presentations at the libraries, and I heard you mention your senior groups. So, we have to, I, I need to learn more from you, where those critical places are, that we want to place or be presenting or interacting with. So, everything was blank. I can still read this. Oh, there we go. So where have we been so far? I said we were already at the board workshop, I've been to the leadership team, I've been in every school building. I just wanna tell you a few of the highlights that I've picked up so far. There is a strong reputa, there is a strong commitment to your school district, it's evident in every place that I've visited, and there's a strong commitment to wanting to maintain the great reputation that you have. And I wanna share with you, when I asked the leadership team, and this kinda struck out to me, it's just something I heard them say, I asked, "What are, what are some of the highlights of your school?", and someone said, "Service first to the students, parents, and staff." And I just thought you should hear that, because that's such a testimony to the kind of messages that I've been getting when I've been out in the schools. There's a valuing of the rich diversity that this urban area offers, and I think, as I contemplated how we could improve, develop a communication plan here, I think we really have to investigate, where are all the places people get information? There's a lot. There's a lot of places that people, you have Madison Magazine, you have online sources, you have libraries, you have community centers. I think this definitely needs to be part of the plan, is brainstorming, where are those places that the schools could be present? And I don't know the answer to that yet, and I think we have to ask that question and dig, and dig around. That's in my initial plan. I did not hear about the idea of people wanting to do surveys or asking, I think we need to, I think we need to do some surveying, and I think we, again, I mentioned earlier, and we need to do some internal communication. First and foremost, what we've been looking at is an Intranet site, and that would be Phase Two of the website project. So I'm gonna bring you a little bit up to date on the website project. When I first was invited, that was what I was asked to do, was work on your website, and the first thing I did is a website content review. And what does that mean is I, I'm a content person, you know, I look, what does it say? What impressions does it give? How is it organized? What's the experience using our website? And I completed that report, and since then, I've been meeting with a five-member committee made up of Dan, Gina Thousand, Joyce, Andrew, and, is it five, or that's?
Yeah, and Bill.
And Bill. Hi, Bill. And the five of us have been meeting long distance, we've been meeting on-site, and we're in the design phase now and in the content phase. What I mean by content is we're reviewing all of the navigation items, building out what content's, evaluating the content that's there, and trying to upgrade it and bring it more into line with what should be there. For example, on every website you visit, up on the left-hand side, there's an About Us, right? When you go there, you find out what kind of organization is this, who are they, what, we don't have that. So that's an example of content we'll be building out. But also importantly, what are those landing pages gonna look like? What are people gonna, what information are they gonna be greeted with? What I learned today, I heard it over and over again, so it really needs to be part of our strategy, is our administrative assistants are looking for some guidelines. What's good content? What do you want on the front page? Where do I put it? And so we're gonna be building out, as a matter of fact, next Tuesday, Gina and I are gonna meet again, and really synthesize all the feedback that we heard today from the sites, trying to create some consistency. But I will tell you, and it was very rewarding, is that they're very open to this, and they're excited about it, and they're looking forward to it. So, the website will probably be launched between April and May, definitely ready and sparkling for July 1st. We wanna make sure, I always say, do we wanna plan it well now and launch it well, or do we wanna launch it poorly and fix it later? And I'm pretty sure you wanna plan it well and launch it well, so we're gonna go with that. So we're working real hard towards that goal, and I'm pretty excited. So it's in design, as far as looking pretty, and it's in development as far as content. And then, I think what we want to consider in our plan, you know, some key ideas, I really think that to build a sustainable plan, you're gonna need to build it over time. There's no way you can do everything in the first year. And we do tend to throw out a lot of tactics, like we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that, but ultimately, it has to be things that we can achieve. And I'm really careful about plans I propose, because I think there are a lot of good ideas that go dormant, because we can't achieve everything. So I do have in a second, I proposed to you in that, in that draft, the timeline for this first year, and I'd like to think about that. I think we have to really think about who our key audiences are and include external and internal. Right now, we've been very general in our plan, and I need, need more input from the board, perhaps a group of you, or a subcommittee, or however you wanna talk, where are our external audiences that we must reach and how can we reach them? I need more specifics to be more effective. I think we have to include two-way communication. We have a lot of sending going on here. are going to meet again, and really synthesize all the feedback that we heard today from the sites, trying to create some consistency. But I will tell you, and it was very rewarding, is that they're very open to this, and they're excited about it, and they're looking forward to it. So the website will probably be launched between April and May, definitely ready and sparkling for July 1st. We want to make sure, I always say, do we want to plan it well now and launch it well, or do we want to launch it poorly and fix it later? And I'm pretty sure you want to plan it well and launch it well, so we're going to go with that. So we're working real hard towards that goal, and I'm pretty excited. So it's in design, as far as looking pretty, and it's in development as far as content. And then I think what we want to consider in our plan, you know, some key ideas. I really think that to build a sustainable plan, you're going to need to build it over time. There's no way you can do everything in the first year. And we do tend to throw out a lot of tactics, like we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that, but ultimately, it has to be things that we can achieve. And I'm really careful about plans I propose, because I think there are a lot of good ideas that go dormant, because we can't achieve everything. So I do have, and a second, I proposed to you in that, in that draft, the timeline for this first year, and I'd like to think about that. I think we have to really think about who our key audiences are and include external and internal. Right now, we've been very general in our plan, and I need to, need more input from the board, perhaps a group of you, or a subcommittee, or however you want to talk, where are our external audiences that we must reach and how can we reach them? I need more specifics to be more effective. I think we have to include two-way communication. We have a lot of sending going on here, but you heard the folks just before me looking for, "Ask us questions, we want to interact with you." I mean, that's an indication, you know, that's the world we live in. People want to be social and interact. I think the Intranet has to be a place where staff can interact. I think, you know, I'm trying to think about how we can create places where people can interact. I think we need to develop this plan with as much input as possible, with being ownership, because we're going to spread out ownership. It's not going to be one person's job. It has to be systemic. People have to be understanding of the plan and want to be, do their part in the plan. And I've heard that from the board, I've heard that from the administrative assistants today. Tell us what we can do. And I think we have to develop it with as much ownership as possible, so that people know their part. So let's go over the timeline, and it's very rough, but it gives you an idea of what we're working on. The timeline, I'm looking at for the first year, considering this the first month. The website has been going on since October. We're moving it through to launch in April and May, knowing that we'll be adding content and adjusting and finding plans and finding things, probably right through October, I would say. That's typical. We need to include in this training. There needs to be training for the folks who are going to be implementing the different phases and pages. So right now, I'm thinking, launch April, May, adjust June through October. I don't know if you have any feedback on that? I'm open, really, I am. I do want to continue researching the key messaging and striving, most importantly, to understand what people want to know about. We know generally what staff, I have a little handout here that I'm going to hand out before I leave, but it tells us what, nationally, what folks, internal, people who get paid by the district, that's what I consider internal, they want to know about the quality indicators in the district, they want to know what's happening. How are we a great place to work? They want to know about that. We do know that most districts have, most organizations have difficulty in generational differences when you have a divide, like you have a twenty-something to thirty-something young staff, and you have staff who have veteran service of, you know, in their fifties. We know there's a different communication needs amongst those groups, and a survey could help bring that out for us. We could understand that a little bit better. We do know safety is a concern for all staff, as well as parents, so we want to make sure our messaging is clear around safety, how we're handling that. We know that districts that get high marks for technology have staff that understand how it impacts the classroom. So keeping technology communication open and alive is important. And how staff, staff who are communicated with feel that they're supported in on things, know their concerns will be taken seriously, and feel as though they are included at work. So I'm just going to leave this for you as something, we just did this for the state education convention, so I thought I was going to share it with you. So we do want to schedule some staff and parent surveys, starting, I'm thinking, we develop March, April, we launch before, you know, we got to be careful that May timeframe with staff, because they get very busy and we don't want to, you know, so we have to get going on this, if we're going to do this. And then community surveys would be after the, after the new school year starts. We'd like to start our social media right away. We'd like to get started now. If you're interested in social media, we have your go-ahead, we're going to start working on that. Dan's pretty sure he wants to work on that, and we heard from the principals that they're on board, as long as it's a district, a district effort at first. So staying at the district level, and then moving into perhaps Twitter at the site or administrator level, that would be the big plan. Thoughts on that? I'm open to. And then we would like to launch a community newsletter, and I've been thinking a lot about that. Newsletters are in the past, things that have happened in the past. And in your urban environment, I'm really thinking about sort of a magazine-style feature stories, that one of the comments that has come up from the board, and that came up with my leadership team, is this, your leadership team, is this idea that people, we don't have a way to connect with education issues, what's happening in education. So I've been thinking of all, maybe the way to address that is to do this more of a, and considering your demographics, a magazine style, that's the best I can describe, eight pages, twice a year, that really is issue-oriented about education. And what's coming up? What issues are you facing, and why changes are important? So that the general community kind of keeps up with where you're moving towards. That's the general idea for a community newsletter. And then the e-newsletters, we heard a lot of that from the principals, as a matter of fact, I didn't have to mention it, they mentioned it to me, I was thinking it, they'd like to move away from paper and into the digital world. So again, finding out what technology to use, we could be working with Bill, finding out what they're comfortable with, building out templates, helping staff get trained, looking for content, best way to present. So that's where we are really at. And ending with, how will we know we're making progress? We can do pre- and post-surveys, if we use mass mailing systems for e-newsletter, I'm proposing that in the plan, I will be, there is some expense to that, but not a lot. And you can get a lot of data in the back end of mass mailing systems, Constant Contact, MailChimp, they're all built for this kind of work. I would, I would recommend that for you. And then we can see what people are reading, who are opening, and if they're, you know, if it's working. We can measure if it's working. We want to, we'll be measuring our social media response rates, and basically, we would want to use pre-imposed surveys to monitor perceptions. Again, back to the beginning, sustaining that great reputation that you have. We want to make sure we keep sustaining it, we know what's on people's minds. So perhaps developing a sustainable over time, we have a process where we survey on a regular basis, not just once and done. And so those are the big ideas that we're putting forward. I drafted it all in a form Q, but no way is that finished, but I have to get it down and out to you for you to consider, and I would like your feedback.
Thoughts?
Actually, can you clarify what e-newsletter? I guess my understanding was, right now, our buildings basically do the newsletters electronically, so I, is there something different about?
Sure. Oh, sure.
Okay, can you talk about that?
Yep. So, right now, what they do, in my understanding, is they create it on print, and they attach a PDF, and they, they put it on the website, and they mail it out. One told me that they spend like eighteen hours putting it together, and then they mail it all out via, via email.
Okay.
E-newsletter digitally, you compose it, and it comes into your inbox, and you open it, and it has clickable links, and it's searchable, and you scroll through it, it has headlines, I could, I could pull one up.
So it's a different program that they're used to create?
It's a definitely, it's a software program that you can create it in. Constant Contact is a mass mailing system.
Okay.
You may subscribe to them, if you, and you can read it on your iPhone, you can read it on your smartphone, you can click on it, open it, it takes you to the links. So it's not a lot of writing, it's usually a lot of graphics, shorter articles, link-tos. I can see if I'm interested or not, and I'm done in like, you have fifty-six seconds most people spend on an e-newsletter.
We, we actually get that, like, the State Bar uses that, so it's a newsletter, and if I, it says, "Read more."
You can do it that way, yeah?
And we, we also have a similar thing through the Wisconsin Medical Society, the Medigram, and it's just a very similar.
And you can subscribe to it, so your external, like, say your three-year-old parents, or your, your parents who are moving to the community like to subscribe, can put subscribe buttons out, receive our updates. We can use it for promoting events, we could use it to ship out a video they did, we could use it to, you know, this is, we could talk about, our kids are going, they'd like your questions, you know, we can do all that, could link to their, to their website through it. So there's a lot of interactivity you can build, so it's a program that you would use. And they're not expensive, and they're effective, and you can get, one site I'm working with right now, I don't know how we get to this, we're getting seventy-five percent open rate. I'm like, yes. But, you know, they're opening it on their iPhone, and they're scrolling, and if they like it, and we get, we can tell what they're reading, so what's interesting. So there's a lot of information to get out of it. But we have to work with Bill to make sure that, you know, we have a system that works here. So those are e-newsletters, and that's what I was talking about there.
I'm concerned, when I read some of these things, and I, you put all these together, it looks like a lot of person-hours.
It could be, some hours.
And a lot of, it appears like it's not expensive to deal with, with the electronic camera. We can eat stuff, but it seems to me that somebody's got to keep editing it, somebody's got to read responses if there's going to be a response in there, somebody's got to follow up on it now. Now, that's something that one ought to do, if you do this, we should create an expectation.
Yes.
And I, and I think that, as I read through all of this, and I don't know how it'll all settle out, but part of my concern is the amount of time, the cost-benefit of, and I'm one who was really into the school community relations type of thing, the cost-benefit in terms of person-hours and cost, and, and that sort of thing. And I think that, you know, I like the survey, the annual, you know, our periodic survey type of thing. We did one on student climate, exactly, two years old, but I suppose that could be modified.
I think that would be a stepping, you know, that we would want to look at that.
But it's, but I don't know if you were able to read that or not, and that sort of thing. But the magazine piece, at least as I read it, it sounds a bit slick.
And, yeah, I think it's slick.
And it would seem to me, this thought in my own mind, why can't we get just a newspaper print insert into the Community Herald? And somebody over here is going to say, "Well, that doesn't have much circulation," but by time to time, they've been willing to send it to every household as a promotion for their newspaper, and that sort of thing. These are just some thoughts that come to my mind. I didn't see any mention of branding, kind of how we would arrive at that, because that seems to be at least the current buzzword among organizations and that sort of thing. So I'd also, one of the things is the crisis management types of things, which is a separate issue on this, whether there's a predator at a school, or whether you have to, whether everything's frozen over, and schools close, or whatever it is. But I think there's also issue things that arise, and it would seem to me that these are often going to have to be thoughtful, thick pieces, written in a brief enough form that people will read them and understand them, I think, of the issues of the fund balance that, you know, that, that came up when the UW had its, had its so-called slush fund. And I said to myself, I had three emails from a so-called friend that says, "Doesn't the school district have a slush fund?" It's like that, which we call the fund balancing. And, and, you know, and Jared wrote a very informed document, a long piece, but from that long piece, you could get short paragraphs, blurbs, you know, that sort of thing. I think a lot of that is helpful, and I'm wondering if we're doing too many things, biting off too much.
I, I, I want you to think about that.
And if we had a, I think I would like to see a plan that, that looked like, here are the, here are the two things you do in the next six months, and that sort of thing, website or something like that, and, and then kind of string out the ones that might be, because a lot of this requires education and training. I have to go into Joyce today to find out how to get to the executive session of my board docs, you know, I like to print it out, you know, that sort of thing. But, you know, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of means out there who are not up to date with, see, I have this phone, but it's mostly a prop. But I, I think we need to find ways to, to spread out the introduction of these materials, and, and in what steps, but I think we need to get into the e-stuff, I think that's important. But all at once, and we need to find out who's going to manage it, and who's going to edit or approve the message that's going to be out there. We had the same thing when, when the testing issues came up, and Andrew did the same thing on, on the curriculum, Common Core, Common Core curriculum. And I've always thought that having a kind of a research piece, that it's a page or page and a half, but be able to draw from that and make, be able to have everyone agree that this will be our common response.
Well, yes, that's good practice.
And you answer it in a word, or a sentence, or a paragraph, or something longer. I'm talking too long here, but I think, I think I'd like to see something that's, that has, you know, there's a lot here, and I'd like to see the focus. We have one community which has a senior center, a library, you know, very well-developed, and another one that's a, a different demographic, that's younger, and a lot of the community resources aren't as developed there, and we have to deal with, with both of those. So when you use the word libraries in the plural, that's, that works in one community, but may not work in the other.
And that's really a part of the kind of year-long investigation I'm proposing, is really getting specific about how the different, not only communities, but different demographics, you have different demographics that are, you know, it's complex. It isn't something you can figure out in a year, I mean, in a day. We really, it is something you build, my first, I, I agree with the sustainability part, because I wouldn't want to suggest to you too much to do. I, I would feel bad about that, I would find that to be wrong. Because if I suggest too much and you can't do it well, then you won't sustain it over time. You'll say that was, you know, we didn't have the capacity, and I've seen that happen. So I really, bullet one, let's think about what we can handle, what can we handle? But at the same time, the complexity of that is, different demographics receive information in different ways, and it's very hard to prioritize one demographic over another in a school. We, you know, everybody's important. So trying to build out some print, trying to build out some e-communication is, you know, stepping close, very, just getting our toes wet into what we could do, and trying to get good at. I'm, I'm thinking you try to get good at, let's say, an e-newsletter, and it takes about a year to get good at it. And your first one gets thirty percent open, because nobody knew they got it, and then the neighbors start talking, right? The kids, "I got it in the news, didn't you see the news I saw?" And then we cross-promote it on Facebook, and then we get a few more people, and then we start twittering and create a hashtag. So, I mean, these things don't just happen, they do require, and I appreciate you bringing that point up, attention. And it is, it is statewide, I worked with WISPRO a lot, the School Public Relations Association, and at the conference, I don't know if any of you were at the session, we just did a session, we just surveyed statewide on school districts, how they plan to handle communication and public relations. Because ninety-six percent of the superintendents reported back that this was an issue. Ninety-six percent said they have an issue with communications. For the first time, we presented on the fact that superintendents need help with that. They're busy folks. And it is a science as much as an art, to issue management, this is what you referred to, the Common Core and the, the fund balance, those are issues. Issue management is a science as much as anything. So how you deal with that is a question. I can't answer for you, as a board, you do have to decide that. I could build too much into a plan, I could build too little, you know, I'm here asking, what will help you? Because that's what I would like to do. I would like to, I hear your priorities and, and help you. I don't into, I would not propose a slick magazine, I apologize if I inferred that. I do think well-presented and professional is important. Slick is not a word that I would.
I meant something, I meant kind of, the paper it's on, as opposed to newsprint.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, you know, it's funny that glossy costs the same as matte in today's world, just in case you want to know. And full color costs the same as black and white, so it's all perception. But I'm thinking more about how we reach.
But it is perception.
It is.
Because, because if, you know, people say, "This looks pretty fancy."
And expensive, is what, is what you're worried about, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I just, I raise these issues, I don't have, I don't have an answer for a lot of these, but I.
And I think some of it is, what do you want to do? There are many choices, but ultimately, it has to be something you're comfortable with as a board, and that you support, and that you support. There are many choices, but ultimately it has to be something you're comfortable with as a board, and that you support, and that we want to pursue. And then we measure it for results, you've mentioned results, we wanna measure results, we don't just, you know, keep moving forward, we stop and take inventory and say, is this achieving our goals? You know, do we, do we get there? And return on investment of communication, I can speak to internal communication, um, heard this from a survey guy, we were talking to a school district, and he, I can't give you the exact numbers, but one school did an internal survey, very similar to another school that did an internal survey. One school district where it was documented through a survey, there was high satisfaction, a referendum passed at sixty-seven percent, and staff was a strong proponent of the district's passing. The district where, very similar demographic size and area of the state, where there was low staff satisfaction, the referendum failed, and, and a lot of it had to do with the staff did not support the referendum. And we can't say that's because of good internal, you know, we can't, but there was a lot of evidence to suggest that this staff didn't have a lot of information, and this staff did, and felt included, and there's, there's truth to that in organizations. Gallup poll is out there, twenty thirteen, telling about the importance of employee engagement as one last thing we have to help businesses thrive and grow. So, I mean, there's a lot of evidence out there that, that's, that's an important piece of a operation.
Right, to me, it's a common sense thing, too. I don't think you need a lot of surveys to convince people that it's important.
But what do they want to know?
Right, well, that, that...
And how do they wanna be involved, is where I would like to go with the survey.
Can you talk a little more about Intranet, too, and exactly how that works? What's, what's different than...
Okay, so what we're working on in another district is this whole idea that we wanna create a internal communication place, and we want it online, so that staff twenty-four seven can go there for information. So let's say, let's say you have forms for requesting an absence, well, it would be there. But let's also say that when they land there, they're gonna see information about the strategic goals, they're gonna see information about the Antarctica, you know, we're gonna create a, a dialogue on the landing page, as well as logistics. So I can, people wanna know, if you're employed, you wanna know how to get paid, you wanna know where to get your insurance forms, you wanna have all the, the stuff that you need to function as an employee, but also, what else can we do with that place, that site, to help staff be engaged with the organization? So that would be Intranet.
'Cause right now, a lot of that information is on our website, I mean, employees can access all of that right now. So what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, how is this different? I mean, I'm not envisioning, I guess, there's...
Well, I do think a lot of it should be on the Intranet, it's not really, you know, your website has two primary audiences when you do build out a website, and you can't be everything to everybody, you know? So the website as a public face of the district is really for community members and parents who are seeking information, so we're building it so they can find what they want when they go there. But the Intranet is really more for staff and where, what they need, so it's an audience of staff. So it's like a website built for staff as the main audience.
The point is, it's password protected, you have to log in to get to it, only staff can.
Okay, so, and now, I guess I could go on, like, I don't do, do that, but there's, 'cause there's a staff section here now, resources for staff, and then there is a section that we can't access right now.
MG Chat.
Uh, well, no, that, I mean, uh, as far as the forums and all the kinds of things you're talking about, those are accessible right now under a staff portion of our website, but there's another part with the, um, uh, what's that, our... Yeah, I think, yeah, so that we can't access as board members, but the staff do access through their website, so I'm just trying to get an idea of how this would be different.
So, so think about like a staff in service, like a whole day staff in service, and people have different places to go, or your back-to-school week, and here's, you know, fifth grade's coming back this day, and you're gonna be over here, and sixth grade's, you know, all that kind of scheduling stuff that you would say, okay, here's our professional development day, and then, and here's some things you need to know, we're gonna be changing the locks at, you know, five o'clock, the, all the key codes are gonna go down, and, you know, that kinda, all that kinda stuff can be kept there.
So it sort of simplifies it for staff in a way?
Yes, one-stop shopping.
It's just one site that has, okay.
One-stop shopping.
So would you remove that from the main district website, then? Okay, yeah, that, I can see that, now that makes some sense, so it's...
But I'd like to talk to some staff, and I'd like to wait and work with, you know, Dan and his folks about what you, you know, what, what should be there, what do staff wanna find that they can't find?
Right.
It's a lot to do with logistics, but we also wanna think about engagement.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, to me, that would, that, improving the internal communications is a priority. Um, I, I guess, if I were prioritizing these, I'd say our website, and then, but I also getting on Facebook quickly, 'cause I think that is a way that, to reach a lot of adults. Uh, you know, another thing that, um, and I, I like the e-newsletter piece, too. Another, because I think you could, you could advertise that on Facebook, people could...
Yeah, cross-reference, you...
All of the municipalities have, I mean, Manona actually, I think twice a year puts out a print newsletter, and I don't know if it'd be possible to have a couple pages in that in the school district.
Yeah, see, that's the kinda thing I'd like to know about.
The village of Cottage Grove just does theirs electronically now, they did use to have a print one, but they do it electronically, I don't know how often they do it, but that would be another possibility, I'm not sure about the town, would they have one as well? But it seems like, you know, in terms of worrying about, if we were prioritizing before we go to a full-scale magazine newsletter, that might be a way to start, I mean, it's just a thought, might be a way to start to have a couple pages in those.
I, I think there'd be, I think there's probably many of these publics out there who have newsletters, where we could have page, the senior, the senior newsletter for Manona, it is a kind of a, uh, newsletter, it's very informative, but it's not really professionally put together. But, but, uh, I'm on the Manona Grove Education Foundation, we were thinking of, uh, getting a Manona Schools page in there, that emanated from that, uh, in which, uh, the only thing they have in there now is, you know, Super Cupots, you know, for the school, if we could have, you know, we could...
Could they have an update in there?
We could both promote the foundation in a paragraph or so, and do something with the schools, 'cause every time I put anything at the senior center, they know I'm on the board, and that's, that changes the whole conversation. They'll ask me about the schools, their children, their grandchildren, and all that, you know, you know, so that would cover, now, that doesn't solve necessarily, that solves the gerontology hit Manona, but it doesn't deal with the, uh, the other community, so I think you have to...
Well, there's senior groups in Cottage Grove, too, but...
Can I, well, I've, I've got a...
Not to the same extent.
Right, Jessica.
Uh, I think that we, you know, have a lot of things to talk about and discuss in this topic, and I'm just wondering where, what's our next step? Where do we go from here, I mean, from this plan, are we...
Well, this is a draft.
Oh, draft.
So I really wanted some more input.
So, okay.
Yeah, so she was asking proof.
And then reconvene in several, I mean, do we have a timeline and...
Well, we're working on the website now, so that's moving forward, and I guess, do you have a timeline? I mean, I think you should, personally, I think we should say, these are our next three steps, I heard that as a suggestion, I'm good with that, these are the next three steps. And if we wanna agree that that's website, social media, and I guess e-newsletter or print, we're still debating, then maybe we have the next investigation going on for other ways, I think that might be the next, like, I didn't know about this, I didn't know about the senior center. I like those, I've asked the principals to start brainstorming amongst themselves, so we could do a very six-month plan, you know, here's the three things we're gonna do. I do think, I think it takes time, it takes about a year to figure out what you wanna do, it, it's not an easy fix, 'cause you got a lot of ideas. Important thing, I think, is to get something that you're gonna sustain, you're gonna agree you wanna do, and you're gonna do that well, so that we have some agreement tonight.
And was your question, 'cause you mentioned maybe even a subcommittee, I mean, I was gathered that you wanted some feedback from us tonight, but maybe some of that feedback would be creating a subcommittee that could spend more time talking about it.
I think that that's kinda where I was going with that question, is that it seems like we, we do have a lot of ground to cover, and people have a lot of different ideas, and it might be worthwhile to have a smaller group, kind of hash that was out, because it seems, it seems like there's a lot more to talk about.
It is, yeah.
Susan? Well, one of the things Dean had suggested, and I thought that was a good idea, this may be even better, that was to, my impression of what our role was tonight was to provide input on the report, so that's what I did. But, as you say, there's a lot of work here, so it's not just picking one, two, three, it's some of the things that Dean started to do in detail that I think is a task that needs to be addressed in the report. So those are kinda my comments, and for example, one of the things Dean started, started to talk about were identification of, um, community resources, things you wanna use to get your message out. In most, um, strategic communication plans, there'll be a page on that, and it'll talk about things that have been identified and are gonna be used, and you kinda said, that's a piece of work we need to do. Well, again, I'd like to see that clearly included in this report, and generally isn't, so then the other thing that Dean said is, then, once we get the things in the report that we suggest tonight, um, or, or more focus, or whatever may come out of that, maybe what we do is, we take that next document and meet and really do a work session, and really in an hour of concentrated time. It, it's helpful for us to know what you want from us, too. So I did call Dan, and he said, feedback on the report, so that, that was what I was ready to do. But in terms of starting to identify the top three, I, I don't know if I'm there yet, so, because I'm still struggling with the report. So one of the things that I, um, I, I'd like this report to be something, a communication tool, and right now, um, and so as a communication tool, it's really helpful as you start a report in your intro section, at least for me, when I'm reading and I'm coming into a new place, and actually, it's kinda fun, 'cause I'm looking at Nicole, who is, you know, knows our district a little bit, and is, has some interest in our district. So what do, what do I want her to know, as she starts to read a communication report? Do I really want her to know kind of some of the things that were written? The first thing I'd like to see in the introduction is that overview of the district, you know, what are the communities, what are the, what are the things there are, how many buildings do we have, how many kids, what's our population, do we do extracurriculars? I'd like six lines of, who's Manona Grove School District? And I didn't see that, I saw this kinda feedback from the board that was kinda personal, and, again, a very positive piece. Then the next thing that I like to see, when I'm looking at other district materials, which I did a lot of research on, which I thought was very helpful, is tell me what the, what the mission and vision and goals are for this school district, and how does building a communication plan fit in that? That's, you know, that's your one-line thing, that says, developing and maintaining positive collaborative relationships with all stakeholders, strength of understanding, support of the MG School District, I, that's, that's simple. I didn't see that, so again, part of what I'm looking for from the report is a communication tool, and what it seemed to me was, this is kinda where I think you should go, which, which to me is a working document, maybe I need both, I'm not sure, but I want that working piece, there's no question. So I'd like to modify the introduction to include the brief objective description of the district, the district vision, mission, and goals, the specific goals of the communication plan in a way that they relate to our goals and our mission, so it sounds like our district, not McQuinn, or Cedarburg, or, you know, somebody else, I want it to sound like us, and we wanna meet the needs of our stakeholders, um, at least as a start. And then, um, a critical piece that I didn't see here at all, and you did mention it tonight, but it's not anywhere in here, is an internal communication plan, and I'm thinking, we, we're building, my understanding, as the board directive, was to build a comprehensive communication plan for the school district, and to only address external, which is all I had to read, to me, left a, a big gap, that, that I would like to see us initially address in this report. So that, that was kind of a start, and then, one of the things I'd like to see on the grid, so it, the grid kinda gives me an idea of what you'd like to do and your timeline, it doesn't tell me who's gonna do it or an estimated cost. So for instance, if there are five things here, and I have to pick three, and one costs twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's gonna take a year and a half, and one costs five, and I can do it in three months, I might choose that one. I don't have those numbers, so, and, and how much staff is it gonna take? So if it means Officer Joyce is gonna do this full-time, or Jared's gonna have to allocate six hours a week, I need to know that, you know, how's that gonna happen? Do we have to hire a new person to do that? Man, that's a budget piece, as a board member, I gotta know that, so I've gotta be able to see where that is, and I, I, I just didn't have any feel for that, so it's difficult for me to give you good input without that additional information on picking the top three. I, I just don't feel comfortable doing that. Um, and then again, developing the communication channels, you know, what are those, and what Dean was talking about? Um, there's lots of things we can put inserts into, lots of things, and he identified one, but we don't even have a list of what's available. And actually, it looked to me like our Herald Independent left, is he still gonna report this meeting? I don't know. Um, again, cable, what do we have that's available to us, and how do you wanna use that? Um, then identify the stakeholders that you wanna reach, who do you wanna reach first, who's most important, how do you wanna reach them, and what, what tool do you wanna reach them with? And then start to look at, there, I didn't see anything in here about partnerships. We have a foundation, again, we could put together a really nice alumni document that showcased the district. Again, yours could be great, I mean, you could, we could do something together, and there's lots of groups that would like to do that with us. Um, the, the other outline communities, the city of Manona, we share our cable services with the city of Manona and the school district, um, we have a studio at the high school.
Can I stop you for a minute? I thi, I think, I think...
Did I hit the pieces?
Well, you're partly getting into some content, which I think is more than where we are.
Which I don't wanna do, that's exactly right.
And I think one of your questions was these resources, but we just talked about, perhaps, doing a subcommittee to come up with that, because I think we would need to think about what, um, community groups there are, and I know it's one of the things you have here that, I, we've talked about for a long time, is sort of a speaker bureau kind of thing, or just once we prepare something, maybe being able to go out into communities to talk about what we're doing. Um, we don't really have, I don't think, I mean, I think one of the things we should help with is come up with a list of the kinds of things that you're hearing people talk about, that we have this cable system, and we need to know, um, even how that operates, what's live, what's not live, what's the cap, capacity for, uh, for running, you know, right now, there's a, a cable schedule that runs in Manona, and I don't know if that's the same schedule that runs in Cottage Grove, I mean, there are lots of things we should find out, um, you know, and how we would access those.
You're kinda getting into this content.
Yeah.
Well, that's why, that is, but that's another list, that's kinda one of the questions I heard you ask us tonight, I thought, was, give you some ideas of what the, what some of the media, what other groups there are.
And if not tonight, do we wanna go to the...
I think what I'm hearing is that we might need a subcommittee where, and maybe, and the subcommittee needs people from both communities, so that we can talk about what's...
Good idea, really, really good idea.
Rather than getting kinda bogged down tonight with...
Yeah, we can't do that.
Exactly.
No, yeah, right.
And I, and I guess one of the main things that's kinda jumping out at me is that we just gotta decide what we wanna do, I mean, we gotta decide, what's the, what's the purpose? Because we're throwing around all these different things from here and there, we're hearing cable, and we're already talking about, we got one side seeing, we're spread too thin, we're trying to tackle too much, but now, we're, we're adding more and more stuff to it, to the plate.
Right.
Uh, so I gotta, I mean, the magazine, I think that sounds good, I think that, that really, um, shows some of the stuff that, you know, we can use, like, from a newsletter, shows things that have passed, and then you're also showing things that are coming up, that we may wanna gather some, you know, uh, maybe momentum behind, or at least let people know, these are the things that we're working on. And I think that's different than when we start talking about a leaflet or a pamphlet, because then, I don't know, that just sounds like, oh, by the way, here you go, and we all know what happens with leaflets in a newspaper, they just fall out on the floor and get thrown in the trash, usually. Uh, so I think the main thing, we just need to figure out, what are we trying to do? Uh, because all this different stuff is targeting different audiences, we have such a diverse community, and when you're saying, well, Facebook isn't important, it's gonna be important to another community, or we're saying, uh, maybe a printed newsletter is important, it's gonna be important to someone else. So I guess the subcommittee would be the place to go, and I guess we gotta have a diverse group on that, to make sure that we don't have one group that's... diverse group on that, to make sure that we don't have one group that's popularized by, or want to popularize one idea, and pushes that through, and then once that gets approved, then we're going to have something that's still not being used.
Well, and I think we have, I mean, with the work Doreen's done thus far, with staff and with us, we have a good list here.
And I like that story.
And I think, when I, I mean, for my personal priority, we have a website, so I'd like to continue to get that up to speed, because we all agree that it needs a lot of improvement. That seems like an obvious first thing. And then Facebook, we've talked about for a long time, and we have so many things that go on here where, you know, Dan will comment on it. I wish we could throw that up there right now. So that seems to be another obvious one. Then when you get past that, it...
And I do want to say, too, one thing that Susan mentioned, she'd like to see. I have in the plan for the website is the development of a school and district profiles, as you described, that would be the interesting and about us piece is, but the content from that has to be built from within. And so I'm working with Gina and the principals with a template, asking questions and having them bring out those key ideas that would flesh out that school profile. So I wanted to let you know that we're working on that. I think we have a pretty standard school profile. I mean, again, I'd say, research what we've got first. Right. But we're working on that. We are working on that. Again, let me just, again, a report that basically shows, I mean...
I don't think we need to go back to that. I think, I think, yeah.
But I just, I mean, that's one of the key areas we need to process.
So you're already working on pieces of it. So what, exactly what you really need from us is more a list of community resources.
We go in the right direction. What do you want as a finished product? I appreciated hearing what you're looking for as a finished product. And I think we've identified a process.
Right.
So I think that was a healthy discussion.
That makes sense. I think so, too. Jessica?
Yeah, I just think, I wanted to suggest that maybe, you know, we've identified a need, and maybe our next step in this process is that anyone who's interested in serving on the subcommittee, get in contact with Susan, or if anyone has any brainstorming ideas of other people in the community who might be good to reach out to for some more information. And then, once we form that group, we can come up with, you know, a more honed focus, three, two, three items for us to really take our attention to, and then prepare some sort of a plan from there. But I think right now, everyone is just kind of talking about a whole bunch of random things, you know, and their ideas, and it's not really focusing our conversation, it's just making it very scattered.
But we've been presented with a report that has a whole lot of random...
Well, but this is the next step in that, is that we need to come up with a plan of how to use this information in a, in an efficient way. And I think that we, the next step is to have a more specialized and focused discussion on it, which doesn't seem to be taking place right now.
Maybe adding the information we've asked for.
Jessica?
I just want to say, to go back a little bit earlier, we're not a business. We're not going to get a return on investment on any of this stuff, right? I understand when we're doing a referendum, and you want information. I want information out there, too, but I think we're talking this to death. I'm amazed we don't have a Facebook page up yet. That's a four-hour project, not a, not a year-long project.
Not even.
I mean, I've been Googling other people around here. Mount Hornum has been posting since October 24th, 2013. I mean, it's not that big of a deal. If you don't post, it's not that big of a deal. I mean, you get 200 likes. I want, I understand you wanted to keep posting and stuff, but you don't, you don't have to post seven times a day. I mean, I looked at, let's see, Middleton posts a lot, Portage posts every couple of days. I mean, it's just...
Three, they suggest three times a week minimum for Facebook.
Right, right. I mean, how long are we going to talk about that?
Three hours, we could finish it.
Right. I mean, I could sit there until midnight and put it on Facebook.
Right. I agree with you.
Well, you had that scheduled to go up in February. That sounded good to me. At least, didn't I read that here somewhere?
I mean, I don't understand.
I think we have consensus here that we want to move this to a subcommittee, because to be honest, we consider talking about Facebook pages till midnight and really make no progress.
Except, I think the issue was, a lot of us thought what we were supposed to get out of here was prioritize some of these items, which I think we've now done, and was to, I thought we were being asked to give you some additional resources, not from a subcommittee, from us tonight. So if we're not going to do that, that's fine.
I think it's a better idea.
I think it's a better idea, because I think it's a bigger job than perhaps you realized. And I think, so I think that does make some sense. So I think at this point, probably that's a good idea, Jessica. People who are interested in just having, probably just a meeting to throw these around and come up with a good list, and maybe, because I don't want to redo what you've already done. You've already got a good list here of things to work on. And I think all we, all I would see us doing is maybe coming up with some resources to plug into this list, not coming up with a different list. I think this is good. That's my own opinion. I don't, you've done a lot of work already with staff. You've already got a good plan here. So I think what you're asking from us is just some enhancement pieces, if that makes sense.
Well, yes, I wanted to...
I'd like cost and staff time.
Right. Well, we can...
Well, not only. We should do that. If you want that, then we should add that.
Right. And, well, and that may be just a question. You know, staffing is a piece of it. I guess personally...
Well, we're not going to know until...
That's something that's, I'm looking at Dan to do. I don't really see that as our job. I mean, I think, if you're talking about hiring additional staff, that becomes our job. But if you're talking about reassigning, that's not our job. So, and working it out. So I personally don't, I didn't have a big question about that. I just figured we'll figure it out. But I, so, okay, in order to wrap this up, why don't we just say that anybody who's interested in meeting briefly, and we'll have to pick a time, I guess, contact me between now and Friday, and we'll try to set up a time within the next week or so to just see what, just maybe agree on what other information people think they want, and then also come up with some of these resources. Does that make some sense? Rather than delivering, would that be? And then if there are any specific things, Doreen, that you really want input on, too, you know, you could forward that to Dan, but, so just so it's clear what you want from us. Dean?
Well, I may be shouted down, but I thought that, I think it might be useful that if we, if we could have, if we could do this on the night when we do have committee of the whole, and not a business meeting, that we could, that we could, when we have more time, we could systematically get it recorded, throws, you know, assemble as this group, throw it out on the table, and get a shopping list of things that we would like to have, and ask Susan to jot down six points, or whatever they have, and discuss them, and take a few of them off the table, maybe, and I'll be happy to do what I, what I'm concerned about. But then I think the idea of a, of a working subcommittee that would have, other than board members, board members plus, I think, representatives from, because I just do not think that principals and people who are teachers working in schools understand the entire nature of a community, because they don't buy, they tend to be of a certain age level, and they, they don't, they simply don't have that depth and width of perspective. I think they need to be on it, because they represent a certain group. But I think you need to have maybe two or three representatives from each community who could, who could lend a hand in it. I think it needs to be, other than a board committee, and a staff committee, if you want to validate it.
That's turning into a much bigger thing than I think I was picturing. I, I don't really, well, yeah, I think I will shut you down. Not necessarily, but what I, you know, I think that my view of what was happening here, and maybe I'm wrong, but my view was that essentially, the communication needs to come mostly from staff, because they're the ones who are doing the work and involved in it. And it's really the mechanisms and our assistance with what mechanisms might work. And that's where I think this is a list that staff has come, and Doreen has met a couple times with administrators, as you heard her say, and working with staff, and this is a list they've come up with together. And we had tossed these same ideas around before. So I saw our subcommittee is much simpler than that. I, I think that's where, when Doreen talked about the surveys, that would be getting at the greater community, and what would help you to know about, how would you like to learn about it, would you be interested?
And I want to recap, that wasn't something I'd heard from you. That's something I'm bringing into the list, and I wanted, before we go out and price that, I think we, are you interested in that? That would be, you know, that's a subcommittee question. And if you're interested in it, then, then you get a price. If you're not interested, like we are not interested in surveys, we've done them, we don't think they're of value, okay, we'll stop.
Isn't survey monkey free?
Well, survey monkey's free if you write the price.
Right.
And then also, we got to look at the piece that we already, we, the survey that we just took away last year.
Right, we have climate surveys.
There was a communications piece in there.
There was a, yeah, we do have some information already. I don't, I don't see creating a big committee, is what I'm saying. I don't see this as a working, an ongoing working committee that involves community members. I think that's not the point. The point is to get going on this stuff, and figure out how to get the information out, and then figure out how to get it together. And realizing that staff members already have a lot on their plates, and this is adding something. But I think it's just such a crucial piece, we just have to do it, and it has to be part of what we do. And if we need another person, we'll need to talk about that. But I think it's, I mean, we'll...
Well, I just, I just, I just think there needs to be at least another discussion among the board to help set some priorities on this. Because twice tonight, when I, or somebody else here, or Susan, has mentioned issues that are uniquely Manona kinds of publics, Lionel says, no, that's not Cottage Grove. And so you need to, you need to understand, there are different communities, and there are different needs of mechanism, including the television.
Which that's why we can't, we can't be so hasty and say, okay, we need to prioritize, we need to get going on this one item, and not on these other ones, because what's high, what you're saying is high priority in Manona isn't going to be the same high priority as...
I agree with that.
So that's why we can't be...
Okay, so...
So that's why we got to go at everything. You can't just pick one or two things to pitch on.
So the best way to do this, then, would be to, instead of doing a subcommittee, or is the rest of the board suggesting that we put this on the agenda as a major discussion item at the next meeting?
How long, or how long are you going to put for it? Because I think it's going to be too much even for that, unless we...
I kind of think so, too. So I, I'm sort of in favor personally of people who are interested, get in touch with me by Friday. We'll set up a subcommittee meeting where we can have a couple hours to throw things around. I mean, to me, that makes more sense, and then we can bring it back to the board.
Could you identify what you want the subcommittee to do so that we can be aware that? I mean, again, this is like sitting in a shotgun world. All of a sudden, again, it's not very...
Well, I feel a little bit of that way, too, because that's not what I came in here thinking we were going to do.
I know.
But I, but that's okay, that's okay.
So I apologize, because I really, I've always prided myself in being clear, so I apologize if I wasn't. My intention was to have the original board meeting, gather input, and come back, and I really...
Well, that's what I thought, so I got that.
I really meant it to be a draft, that we would gather more feedback on. Because to go out and price, and to go out and really, there's certain things that become extraneous, that you're not interested in, I need to know that. I didn't hear anything that you're extraneous to you. I think there are some things we could just get started, that don't need board approval, perhaps. Facebook's one of them. I don't know that. I don't know you well enough. But I apologize if at any point I miscommunicated, because certainly, I don't want to do that.
Well, I, I mean, I thought this was a pretty good list, as I said. And I really did think that that's exactly what you wanted, was kind of input on some additional things. So if people are feeling the need to talk about the more, I think, let's just do that and get back to you. I think that, it sounded like, it sounded like, because we live in a community, is we do have some ideas of what kinds of media outlets there might be, and you don't have that. And I thought that's what you were asking us for.
I am asking.
But it probably would be helpful for us to sit around together and talk about it, just to help each other think of what's, what would be a good outlets in each community. And I know you had mentioned even radio stations, and for example, I listen to public radio, and that's pretty much it. And so if there are people that listen to other stations, I mean, if there are other, if we think down the road of public service announcements, I don't know if that's kind of what you were thinking, or you mentioned a magazine, and I don't think there is a local magazine particularly.
I thought that's what...
So is that, is that kind of issue?
I guess I'm really confused now. And again, I don't want to take this any longer, because, again, we're way over the time limit on this frame, and this is a board action meeting, but I, right now, I don't know what my role is here. So I'm, I'm a little confused. And if we have a subcommittee, I'm not sure what they're supposed to do. Are they supposed to prioritize these things? And it's my impression that when you have a resource person come in, and they're doing research, and they're out in the community doing stuff, one of the things they do is find out what's in the community for providing a communication channel. What are the communication channels? I don't think that's our role as a board. I mean, we could brainstorm it, we could look at a list and say, oh, we missed this, or we missed this. I don't think that's, that's what you were talking to staff. Again, I'm just confused.
All right, let me tell you my perspective. First of all, on the communication to parents, that's easy, that's my job, and our administrator's job. We know what we need to communicate to educate children, and, and talking about that. The internal communication piece, as well as my job, too, at least that we have that within that, and, you know, some assistance, you know, from Doreen certainly is really helpful with that. Where I need help is the community, community piece. And, you know, you as board members represent the community, your constituents, and what is it the piece, that connection to our school district, to the community? You know, when I was hired, there was, that was clearly part of the thing that the board, communication plan was important. And so obviously, it's something you've given a lot of thought about for a long time, and I agree, it's an important thing. That's where I need help with that from the board, and where do we go with the community piece? We talked about how much, what's the importance level, and, and so there are some, there is a very important board role in that, and, I mean, with myself and the district, and, you know, developing that piece. And so half the things that we're doing here are simple. I don't need board approval, I don't need board feedback, we know what we're going to do. But there are some things that I am looking for help on, and assistance, and the guidelines, and where we do, the Facebook page, that's the easy one, we're going to do it. Okay? And, you know, that's also not a key, that's a small piece, but it's an important piece, but, and there's like a lot of other things, but, so that's where we're at. So as far as that, I do like the idea of a subcommittee, a work group to talk through, continue the conversation we had tonight. We'll get the focus on those pieces, we'll come back, Doreen and I will work on the revised plan, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
That sounds good.
I think what Dan has just told us helps me a lot on this, because I think if we take the, the internal communications and the parent, parent communications off the table, and simply charge Dan with, working with our consultants and with the staff to develop a plan that he can propose to us, then I think it leaves for the subcommittee, or whatever alternative we end up with, to deal with the external work and limit theirs. And that helps answer Susan's question, what would this subcommittee do? And I have a hard time answering that question, too. And I think, I think that that could be two board members, and maybe, maybe another person from each community to help validate it a bit and add to it. And I think that would be a subcommittee, and work with Dan wherever he wants to sign. And that'd be, okay, and then what we could do is submit to Dan any ideas we have on internal, and submit to the subcommittee any ideas we have on, on that one. But I like to see it get into, I like to see this shopping list here come into focus.
Sounds good, Doreen.
I mean, I get what you said, I agree completely.
I mean, I get what you said. I agree completely. But we're all really in this together, too. I mean, you know, communication goes to parents and communication goes to teachers, still comes back to us one way or another.
And you're right. And I, that's why I think that is still part of the plan. And at the very end, I want board support on that plan. It will come for approval. So that's a good point. I mean.
I respect that.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not trying to undermine you. I just wanna know what's going on.
Absolutely.
When the parent calls us up, it's like, what?
No, no doubt about it. And that's why we're, we're discussing it tonight. Yeah. As opposed to me just coming with a finished product at the end for approval.
Okay. So I think that sounds good. So I, I will send an email reminder and we'll get back to you in a week. That'd be good. We'll pick a date in the near future.
Thank you.
All right. Then the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
It's been moved.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. All is in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Supposed.
Aye.
Motion carries.
One quick comment.
Yes.
And just wanted to, a quick recognition as part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
That one of the items in there was the retirement of one of our teachers, Kathleen Huber, early childhood teacher. And so just wanted to publicly thank her for her, her service in the district and make that note.
All right. Then the next item on the agenda is correspondence and announcements. And I don't have anything. Does that do?
Actually, I have none tonight. Dr. Ross was gonna report on a couple, and he was not able to join us. So we'll have some next time.
Then we will move on to administrative reports. And first report is from our Director of Student Services, Scott Brown.
Evening, everybody. I just have kind of three updates for you. No real action items. First is that we are phasing out the Excel program that had been housed in the Nichols Building. This is primarily due to, due to the fact that there are no students in the program. What we're doing is, you saw on the consent agenda, the teacher and para in the, in the program have been reallocated to the high school. And this will help ease our high school special education caseloads on specialized teachers in the resource positive high school. They're quite high, and higher than really any of the caseloads in the rest of the district. What, the, the other factors that, that kind of went into this decision is, you know, beyond, beyond the student enrollment, is looking at best practices around serving students with significant behavioral challenges and behavioral disabilities that, sort of placing them together in, in a segregated program, sort of, the district office is not probably the best way to meet their needs. We've, we've had much greater success developing individual plans with the bottom line being we need to get them through high school. Some of what we're, we've, we've started to see is that students are, are sort of maintained in this program over time, and they're not necessarily accumulating the credits that they need for graduation and then facing the HSVD question and always having the skills to pass the HSVD. So what we're trying to do is get them a regular high school diploma through work experience, off-site programming, those sorts of things, and be more creative on an individual basis. And we are still talking about a very small number of our students, but we can do that more flexibly through the high school. And if we truly can't meet their needs, the high school looking at, looking at off-site programming. So that, it was a logical time to start it with second semester coming around. And the high school staff, of course, are thrilled to have additional support in the form of a special ed teacher up there. The second piece is an expansion of, a possible expansion of our alternative programming. I worked a little bit with Middleton on a student count snap, where we had with one student this fall. And through that work, I learned a program where we can partner with M A T C called the Gateway to College Program. This is, this is targeted specifically at students who are typically underrepresented on college campuses, students who are disengaged from school, have attendance issues, who are credit deficient, those sorts of things. They typically look at students who are in their sophomore and junior years. And, and students are able to earn M A T C credit along with earning a regular high school diploma from their home high school. M A T C works with high schools to link the courses that are taught by M A T C faculty with the graduation requirements for the local high schools. So M A T C would create a set of courses for any students we refer there. And as students took those courses, they would earn no local high school credit as well as M A T C credit. Typically, students earn about three semesters of college credit when they complete this program. And the nice thing about it is these are students who often don't think of themselves as college material. They're exposed to a campus environment. They're exposed to all of the career opportunities that are at a place like M A T C. And they're also exposed to all of the resources that a college campus has to offer. So we have not signed, there's nothing official. I just wanted you to be aware of it because Paul Ross and I, and Dan, if he's interested, will do some site visits this semester to gather more information on it and decide whether this is something we wanna move forward with, even in a small way for next fall. Is, is, like I said, an alternative option for that niche of students that may drop out of high school unnecessarily, who really have the ability to go on, but have never, never thought of themselves as, as college students. So just a piece of information for you. The last piece I have to update you on is the white privilege conference. I wanted you to be aware of this because we will be sending a large number of staff to this. There's a website out there if you're interested in Googling it. But essentially, this is not just a conference about race. It's actually a very comprehensive look at systems of oppression, whether it's related to gender, sexual orientation, religion, race, economics, all of those things, and how systems can respond. This, this certainly connects to a lot of the equity work that we've done in this district. And it's a great opportunity for our staff to interact with national experts in the field of equity, diversity, social justice, and those sorts of things. We're actually sending forty-eight staff members. Of those, thirty-three are teachers. One of our teachers are mentors. All of our principals are going. There's a lot of excitement. I can tell you that I've been receiving emails now for months from staff who have wanted to attend this. And, and it also adjusts our spring break. And so a lot, everyone going is giving up their, the first day of their spring break in order to attend the full conference. So that's a really good thing. The other piece that I wanted to review is that Deidra Gorman, who's one of our intervention equity services coordinators, has been invited to present at the conference. She's presenting a sectional with Andrea Johnson from the Highland Park, Illinois School District. They're presenting on white privilege within the public school system, how to sort of disrupt that and, and some things the schools put into place and the pitfalls and the opportunities that are that are present at that. So we're really excited. I'm sure we'll work in an update for you after, after staff go to this. One of the other benefits to this is that, I think you're aware, we've been working on an equity audit. That's something that you'll be hearing about in detail in the coming months also. And this provides a really nice backdrop for some of the things that you'll hear that come out of the equity audit, as, as well as a great learning opportunity for staff as they consider what, what we learned from the equity audit as well. It's, it's a good kickoff to all of that. So we're very excited to have this opportunity. And those are my updates. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you, in terms of days of the week again, that this is how?
It is March twenty-sixth to the twenty-first.
Which is, which, what day?
It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Oh, okay.
Yes. We also, I should mention, we have five high school students who will be attending the student portion of it as well.
So I was just wondering, in terms of, that Friday would be normally a half day or?
That, I believe, is a staff development day.
Staff development day, okay.
Which also helps enormously in terms of summer.
Well, that's, that was, that was my concern when I heard thirty-three definitely.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm really excited that that many people wanna go. And this, it's a great opportunity that it's here in Madison. I mean, that's just huge. But I was trying to figure out how we're gonna do that. So we will have one school day that we'll have to find coverage for. Have you guys talked about that?
Yes.
You ready for that? Okay.
So it's just that Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. So the twenty-sixth, we have the twenty-sixth on here?
I might have got, I have it off on one day.
Okay. Twenty-seven.
Oh.
Yeah, the first, the Wednesday is like a pre-conference.
Oh, okay.
We're not. We can't fund that much. So.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, so twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Well, that's great.
And we've talked about us, has there any chance for us?
Yeah, I mean, we would, within our, I don't know what kind of budget we have left, but we, I would think, I, I, because I've been before, I figured I just came out for it. But other people haven't been, maybe I might wanna, yeah. We can talk about.
Yeah, I'll definitely, I'll, I'll up on that.
And we can, yeah, if any of you are interested, we can get you on the, the discounted registration.
Okay.
After you've processed a certain threshold, we can get you registered with the district for the discounted rate if you're interested.
Okay.
Just a quick question. What was your criteria, or what basis did you pick the students, the five students that were attending?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I assume.
I'm just out of curiosity.
Deidra really took care of that with Paul Ross, so, yeah.
And the teachers were basically just volunteer?
Yes. That was really up to individual principals. The criteria that I used, building, there are building funds and funds from my department. The, I requested that we really focus on classroom-based, on classroom staff, certified staff, only because certainly you can make the argument that, I mean, I would love to send medical staff to this. I'd love to send food service staff, but we don't have an unlimited number of spots. And I really was looking for maximum impact. Who's making instructional decisions? Who's available to go? You know, I, it was important to me to be there for all three days, that not to pick and choose. You know, who's referring kids for special education, those kinds of things. And so we look at, we're gonna make this kind of investment as a district. Where are we getting the most for, for us of our money?
Now, Susan?
Scott, one of the things, we've been doing this for years. And one of the things is the staff then comes and, you know, does a little report for the board. And, and the first, you know, year or two when they went, again, it's so moving and it's so touching to them. And that's the piece you see. We don't get a lot of good, solid feedback as a board about what, what change did this make in the classroom and the way you teach or how you treat your students or, and I vividly remember one of the special ed teachers did come back and she said, I reviewed all the books in my classroom and ordered new books. So if there's some way, as you come back after the conference, tell us how this is impacting, not the individual, that's a big piece. I think we have a good feel for that. But how does this impact the district and student learning? That would be wonderful.
That's a, I, I'm glad you asked that question. One of the teams that we have working at the district level is our equity leadership team. And they're looking at very concrete things like that. And, and they're all going to this conference. So they're looking at things like when we're hiring candidates, what kinds of questions, what kinds of screening are we needing to find people who understand these types of work with diverse populations and, and students who are typically underrepresented or underserved. They're also looking to make recommendations, for example, for curriculum renewal processes. What kinds of things are we looking at when we purchase new curriculum? When we look at student learning objectives? When we look at how we're structuring courses and delivering services to students? Are we doing that with an equity lens? And so I think that this kind of learning, especially with this many people going, there's more buy-in to those sorts. Even if everyone can't be on the equity leadership team, there's more buy-in to those kinds of things because they get why people are asking the questions they're asking. I hope that answers a little bit.
Yes, it's probably a personal growth experience that carries into the classroom and beyond, I, I think is my sense of it, having done it once. But, and it actually brings to my announcement I should have made, and, because I'm not sure that everybody got this, but that on February twenty-second, second, at the UW Gordon Commons, is a screening of Woke Up Black, which is a documentary that was made a couple years ago and was shown. And some of us saw, I think, but it's free to the public, but you do have to register. So I'll forward this email to everybody in case you didn't see it, in case some board members wanted to turn that.
Susan, just tell me the date one more time.
February twenty-second, it's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, thank you.
And the screening would be from ten to two. Somehow they have nine to four as the program. But I, the screening of the video itself, it's about an hour-long video. They list as, they, they will bring the former students now who were in the video will be there to talk about it as well. So that's part of the presentation. But it's another nice opportunity.
I'd like to ask a question about the gateway program to Madison College. What is, what are the costs per student for that?
Right now, it's, it's the open enrollment. It's the sixty, what we would pay for a student who open enrolls into another district, it's about sixty-five hundred dollars per year. And they would split that over the cost of two semesters.
That's across two semesters? And that, are they totally enrolled in the Madison College program then?
Yes.
Okay, so they open enroll to this district and then they transfer over?
If we could do it with an open enrollment student, but we could also do it with a resident student. So we would pay, the, the cost right now, it would be sixty, about sixty-five hundred dollars for the full academic year for one of our students.
For a resident student. So even though we're have, we're on the same tax base, and we're also taxing people to educate here, and Madison area, technical Madison College is on the same tax base, taxing our citizens, we pay double. Yes?
Essentially, yeah. There was some, they, Madison College also received some grant funding to serve the program. They were one of a handful of sites across the country to have the opportunity to pay that, must be a million dollars or something, to get it off the ground.
I just wanna, I think the program is good, but we ought to recognize we're double taxing for the same kids to go to school.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more about it. And I guess I'd be interested in hearing, you know, the full spill of the cost and target students and things of that nature.
And even if it's something that we ultimately decided not to do because of the cost, it may be a good model to be able to draw some ideas to inform our, our own in-school programming as well. So I think, I think it's a good investment of time to at least research it and.
As a point of information, are there two areas, districts that are pretty heavily involved?
Middleton has twenty spots. Madison is also involved, and Sun Prairie is also reserved.
So the bigger districts.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is superintendent report.
I believe the written report is probably pretty self-explanatory. So I'll just, you know, take a moment to maybe highlight a couple of things. The second Friday count we gave you is just the one-page comparison from the fall report, just so you can see our, our growth. And then we're up four students from the fall. Jared and his staff put together the report. So if anyone has any questions on that piece, and that ties into the open enrollment that's coming up later on. Jared, could you answer any specific questions on that? I think it speaks for itself.
Yeah.
Okay. Secondly, just wanted to inform the board on the tentative high line, hiring timeline and process for high school associate principal position that is open. And so we're looking to have that posted before the end of the week. And said you can follow along the timeline. It will, it'll be a very similar process that we used, you know, for the HR director position, where, of course, it'll be focused with high school faculty, but we'll have a screening committee made up of administrators and, and teachers and support staff as well. And then a second round with administrators and, and then the goal, we have it in place here by the end of March. And then, lastly, the course options, policy committee spent quite a bit of time on this. And we recently approved a new policy. And at the time, and even from the, the resources received from the School Board Association, it was a little bit unclear what this new law really meant. It essentially replaced the part-time open enrollment program. But it also overlapped a little bit with the youth options. And so we're in the process of getting some clarification. So I just gave you a copy of the memo from DPI saying that they're gonna be sending information out to our schools here very shortly with, you know, developing the rules and how this might benefit students. So whether this will have an impact, the part-time open enrollment program has really been very, I don't wanna say underutilized, not utilized very often. It's really meant for, you know, that student has a, one of their particular courses that they like to take that are not offered in their home district to go to neighboring district, you know, to take those. So the course options provide similar opportunities. There's also a little bit different funding mechanism. And it also now includes higher ed. So Madison College would be included as well. And so like you said, there's a little bit of overlap with the youth option program where we can already send, or students can have those opportunities. So again, the point is more details are coming. And this is something that would be available for our students or neighboring students after the fourteen, fifteen school year. So when those rules come in, I'll share those with you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and just as a point of interest, this was not on the agenda, but I just wanted to give you an update on the school closing and the hours of instruction. So that's included as well, that, where we're at with that. We still are immediate and high commitment holders.
Yeah, it's nice to see there's that much flexibility.
Yeah. Our, our school days are longer than a lot of other school districts. And so that extra time certainly helps in these situations.
So we're down to one, one day?
We could have one more closure without being required to make it up.
Then after that, we're looking at extending the school year?
Yes, we probably could look at a day that maybe already is reserved as an in-service day, as opposed to adding on to the end of the year in June. So certainly, if we get to that point, that'll be a board decision to approve.
We take days off, they're like seventy-five and sunny. That'd be much more.
Right. So, Ken, any questions? Okay. Then the next item on the agenda, under, board reports, is the Manona Grove Education Foundation report. Dean?
Dean, just got two or three highlights. The, I think, Dan, you met with the board, the foundation board group, who want to begin the screening of the six applications for teacher.
Yep.
What, what do we call that?
Awards.
Innovative curriculum and teaching.
Curriculum instruction awards. And, and I guess you will report on that later to the foundation board.
Yes.
Okay. And the only other discussion that Dan wants to comment on is both the school district and Manona Grove Education Foundation are tax exempt. And, and both the school district and the Manona Grove Education Foundation get requests to use the tax exempt status for pass-through funding. And I think that the complexity of these grants, some of them are a little different than the others in their purposes and so forth. And I think we could not come up with a common policy. So I think we agreed that John Weinberger, the president of the foundation, and Dan, when we get one of those grants, they will simply meet and find out whether it's, it's better to have it go through the school district or go through the foundation. Has a lot to do with what the purposes of the grant and how it's to be administered and the follow-up and so forth. And the future agenda items, I did mention, one of them is that the, we want to perhaps have a, a more. have a, a more, a greater presence in the senior center newsletter and promotional things in Menona anyway, and then we probably will be developing some major fundraising activity, I think with the goal to raise all of the endowments from $10,000 to $20,000 to each school district, probably, hopefully, without contribution from the school district, but from external funds, but we have yet to discuss that. That's it.
I'll just add one small piece, as Dean mentioned, our subcommittee met today to review the grant applications. We had six grant applications from teachers or groups of teachers this year, which is actually down, you know, from previous years, and it kind of ties to our earlier discussion on internal communication. That's something that I think I can look to improve upon in the future. Being new, I kind of followed past practice and just sent out a couple of email reminders to staff, and I think, you know, as we learn more, and there's tremendous opportunities for our staff that maybe, may or may not have been taking advantage of it as much as they could. So the applications were very good, and there's a couple of teachers I want to follow with for some more detail, and then report back to the entire board at the next meeting.
And then, Susan, Trina is the same, February 22nd jumps out. If people are interested in participating in that, raising effort. All right. Then moving on to the state convention report, and I know I had, heading, in our board policy, it says that when we go to seminars and conferences like that that are paid for by the board, that we report back, and I did have some requests from some people to perhaps put that off till February, which we could if people want to prepare something. I'd like to comment at least briefly on the resolutions tonight, and then seeing, I guess, first of all, because I did send everybody an email and say we were going to discuss this, did anyone have anything they wanted to mention tonight, or is there some consensus that people like to put this on the agenda again, throw it at the board at the convention?
I just had a few words about what happened, I think we can go ahead.
Okay, no, let's just do that, and then if people can need to.
Well, that's fine.
Again, I just assumed we put it off, because I think, you know, even if it's only five minutes from each person, we're going into a timeframe, and again...
I think my thought wasn't that not literally everybody has to weigh in, I think it was more if there's a highlight or something that people felt was important, or something that they wanted to brief, that they wanted to, they thought we should follow up on, or they thought was particularly informative, we could address that. So I don't know, why don't we say if anybody has that tonight, they want to say something, we can, and then we can, maybe we can put it on again too. Peter, you said, did you have a couple?
Well, I was just going to, you know, comment that my focus was looking at, because I've worked on the teacher compensation committee, was just looking at, you know, presentations that revolve around workplace environment and achievement as it associates with, you know, compensation plans and, you know, other workplace things in the, in the, in the schools in the state. I saw some interesting things that, that, you know, but it's, it's a lot of contrast, comparing what we're doing and what they're doing, and so trying to see how these things all fit together.
And it is all helpful.
And it's all, it just goes into the pile, and hopefully this will help inform our discussion.
You're going to have 10 good ideas for tomorrow night?
I'm working on it.
I'm still working mine, I'm working on it. Jessica, put the movie on.
It's about time we get out of here.
I thought it was a very enjoyable and informative conference. I think probably my favorite, my highlight was the presentation that you and I saw together about the effects of technology on children's brains, and in particular, video games and social media and et cetera. It was just very interesting to sit through that presentation, and also thinking about, on one hand, we have these concerns, and on the other hand, we have this huge push in our schools to bring the best, fastest, most up-to-date technology to our kids. So to juxtapose those two, it was very interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, part of that was the study that's come out, that there is really no such thing as multitasking, that people keep handling things together, but you're not really multitasking, that you really can't do all these things at the same time. And it was, so it's an interesting, yeah, poses some interesting challenges.
Yeah, we call that absumma dextem in our house.
Yeah, and that, that was one of the more interesting things I went to, too. In the Policy and Resolutions Committee, the resolution that we added at the end was shortened, and in the end read, "The WSB opposes legislative efforts to mandate a particular amount of instructional time in each school day that must be allotted to particular subject areas," which was basically the point we were trying to make, and that, that did pass quite overwhelmingly. Interestingly, most of the resolutions passed, and the one that got the most debate, we actually, as a committee, kind of placed bets on whether the Common Core or the safety belts on school buses would get the most debate. Safety belts on school buses went about 15 minutes longer in discussion, and actually was defeated with 72 yes votes, 243 no votes, that we did not want to support legislation requiring the safety belts on new buses, in part for some of the things we talked about, that the expense, is it really safer, say, further research is mixed? You could, you would be able to carry fewer students on those buses once you start putting belts in, and who, the big one, a big one was who's going, who would supervise the kids to make sure they were belted in, that it just would create, you'd have to end up hiring people to ride the buses to make sure, because the driver obviously can't do that. So for a lot of reasons, that one was defeated. Our resolution on the state assessments requesting that we would be able to request a waiver from DPI on giving the explore test in the fall of ninth grade was approved 297 to 24, which was one vote less than the approval for the Common Core standards. The Common Core standards were supported by a vote of 298 to 23. And that was interesting, because even at the delegate assembly, the people who get up and speak tend to be the people who have the fears, and you get from the comments, they are the not accurate fears. They're largely based on misinformation, which we've heard a lot of, and which obviously it's being revisited at the legislative level again. But it was, I, I felt good to hear that 298 to 23 people voted in favor of supporting them, because it shows that, to me, that really it's a loud vocal minority that has concerns, and that by far, most people are in support of them, and I think that's a good thing. Otherwise, everything else passed, and there were, there weren't a lot of controversies. And it's really, it really is always an interesting part of the convention to go to, just because of all of the personalities. I've now served two years on the Policy and Resolutions Committee, so I'm not eligible to serve again, so if any of you are interested, giving your name to Nancy Thompson would be, I'm sure she'll be looking for a new person, and again, that's an interesting group as well, because it's people from all over the state, they're people who take these very seriously, it's good discussions, good people to meet, and lots of different viewpoints, really a good experience, so I'd encourage you to all think about. That's probably all I have.
I don't know if this was here, but they didn't discuss AB 286, because that kind of came out after, right?
AB 286.
That's the charter school.
Well, we have, yeah, we have resolutions.
Because we didn't really know, I mean, they kind of changed it since.
Well, we have resolutions opposing, the WSB already has resolutions opposing independent charter schools, and so, and really, there's enough information.
Accountability one with it, so, right. They kind of really put it out after the convention.
They did, yeah, they did.
So I don't know if there's any.
There, we do have resolutions talking about the need for accountability, and so they'll, they'll still rely on those, and even though, yeah, there's some certainly suspicions.
It's not really an accountability bill, it's a wolf in sheep's clothing, really.
You can see pretty much by reading, that's true. That is true, and I'm just looking, I don't think there were any current resolutions this year, but the WSB, because they've talked about that in the past, and basically, well, voucher school accountability, there was one that passed, that said basically that private and private schools that accept state funding through taxpayer-financed vouchers must be held to the same state statutory requirements, testing requirements, and accountability standards as public schools without exception. That did pass, so that would indicate that this particular bill would not be something that the WSB would be in support of, as it's now written. So there is enough to support the fact that it needs to have some more teeth in it, that you, that right now, the plan is to close public schools if they're not performing right yet, and they're not going to close voucher schools. I mean, there's a lot of, yeah, inspirations to run through.
So in terms of the convention, I went to a great one about 4K. That was outstanding.
Good.
The 4K.
The one that our, to our current people presented.
Oh, yeah.
And I'll jump on that, I did want to mention, our presenters did a fabulous job, the one that Jeff mentioned, Connie Hazely and a number of her teachers presented on 4K and 5K programming, and how we use data to inform instruction, and they did very well.
Was that pretty well done, too, or?
Um, it was, it was one of the smaller rooms, but it was one of those, not a single person got up and left beforehand, and they held, and there were a number of good questions at the end, and so, so, yeah, very good presentation. And then likewise, I want to recognize Jared, and with the Forecast 5 and his group as well, that was very informative, and at this board, we'll hear a lot more about that in the future, how we're going to use it in our district.
Yeah, and it is great to know what, how you'll be able to access the data, and yeah, I think we wrote the brain one at the time of our 4K presentation, but anybody else want to say something? Susan?
I went to, much like Peter, I went to a lot of the compensation programs, which were all excellent, and all had different ideas, and give you lots of ideas and things to come back with. I went to a lot of the Common Core to see what people were doing and how they were doing implementation. I have a whole list of policy things from the WSB pre-conference, you know, as usual, all kinds of things we get to look at, so lots of people are going to be involved in those different pieces. The Forecast 5 was absolutely excellent. We were...
Which is the program, yeah. For people that don't know.
We were actually sitting in the program, and one of the things is it takes financial information, and it lets you look at it lots of different ways. So one of the things we struggled with was comparables, and looking at comparables in this district, you can pick out whatever you want. You can say, I want to see Southern Bajaj Conference, and you can look at whatever you want. So again, Lionel's going to love that stuff, and Jared can just go click, click, click. Anyway, it was really impressive, and another school board member turned around and she said, where do I buy this? And again, it was really a great presentation, and it looks like a great program, and actually we're piling it, Dan said we're going to hear more about that. The other thing I wanted to mention is I went to another super great program, Academic and Career Planning and Success, and Project Lead the Way, and I just wanted to pass this out to the other board members. There were a lot of really great things, again, profiling kids, bringing them into an understanding of, of career paths, whatever that career path may be, and different ways to do that. The other thing is there's a $250,000 statewide grant program to encourage Wisconsin K-12 school districts to incorporate personal and financial education into their curriculum. One of the things they talked about is there are basically three pieces of this grant. I've sent it to Dan. Jared already knew about it, and I actually sent it to one of the teachers who might be interested. Right now, we have a financial literacy program at our high school. I don't know much about it, or how we do it, or what the program is, but if we make that required and we submit that as a grant, this district receives $10,000. So that's, those are things you want to think about, and there's timeframes on submitting the grants. Maybe we don't want to do that, but at least, you know, I think we should look at the monies that are available, and three of those were $10,000 grants for really the things that we may already do or be close to doing, and it's okay if you've already, if you're already doing them. So I thought that was really cool, and I just wanted you to have a copy of that grant material. Dan has it, and you have, you have it as well.
Then, moving on, the next item on the agenda is under unfinished business, is discussion and possible approval of the new high school course proposals, which we heard a report on at the last meeting, and you have information in board docs. Dan, do you have one?
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, they have, just a quick reminder or review, four courses, you heard presentations on them at the last board meeting, Game Development 2, Media Literacy and Composition, Non-APL Calculus, and Microcontrolling the Ardino. I guess that was a secondary name for the course, and update the content, but, so before you take action, are there any additional comments or questions?
Then, could I have a motion to?
I move approval of the new high school courses for 2014, 2015 as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments? It's been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then the next item is discussion and possible approval of open enrollment recommendations for 2014 and 15, and we have, Jared sent this updated history out today, which was very helpful to get, and it's in board docs as well, and you have the recommendation here, so Dan, do you want?
Sure, and I'll turn it over to Jared. We did discuss this again a little bit at the previous meeting, and you'll find the recommendation on your board docs for open rolling, for opening seats at two grade levels at the 4K level of 10 seats, and at the high school, ninth grade level, 25 seats. Keep in mind that this is, as a board are required to make, or approve number of seats now in January, but you can modify and add additional seats later on if they become available, and we certainly will monitor that closely, and...
This is the minimum we have to do.
Correct, right. And, but you have to, you have to have the motion in play, or the approval in place, and if you don't, then you would not be able to deny any requests based upon space, and we'd have a real issue with that, you know. So we do anticipate, I think, in the spring, you know, open up a few more seats, but we want to be sure that we have the space, and looking at the long-term impact as well that our space needs, so. I don't, Jared, if you want to handle that a little bit?
Not necessarily, obviously, like you said, we're asking for 10 spots, which has increased on the 4K level from 3 to 10, and we're still requesting 25 at grade 9. Open enrollment starts actually coming up on Monday, February 3rd, and runs through the last day of the weekend, and then we'll bring to the board in May, and then May commit the whole, what we're looking at, and that will also give us the ability to see where residents are, and we're moving in to act along with, doing some more enrollment studies to give us a better idea of what about that, so.
You know, February's a key month for us, is it, we call it the Early Learning Fair?
Yep, on Monday, the same day, open enrollment, we have the Early Learning Fair. On Friday, all the T-4K kids that have been attending the district, the postcards are due back, not that we're going to get everybody back, but are due back to say, are you coming for kindergarten or not? Due to the fact that we do have a fairly large number of open roll students in the T-4K, we're not necessarily for sure who will be continuing. One of the things that we've saw at the Cottage Grove area is there's a large number of daycares there, and so a lot of those people want to keep their kids in that daycare, and so they'll enroll in our 4K program, or file for open enrollment, but then they go back to Madison or whatever school, this is Sun Prairie where they're at, for kindergarten, so.
Is the Early Learning Fair, is that here?
It's here, yep.
You'll put the other second piece in February, also high school course requests, and so February 17th is when those will be complete, and that will have a big impact on how many spaces we might have available for high schools, while we look at the section numbers.
Dean?
I want to thank you for the additional financial information on open enrollment, because I think that the fact is, we're, we're changing gears on open enrollment, because we've been tending to maximize revenue and input, and our class sizes are coming to the point where we have to deal, either stop open enrollment or deal with it another way, but there's also a revenue factor. We've had from 171 to 309 inbound with, you know, roughly around 65 on average outbound. That leaves a great number of people who are permit, mostly permanently open enroll, and the revenue benefit to the school district has, in recent years, been $1,400,000 roughly, and, and by going down from 309 to probably a greater outbound number, we're going to probably be maybe in a loss, or very small number, small amount of revenue at best. So, and I think we've, has this revenue been in the, used in the general fund?
Yes.
So basically, it's, by, by cutting off the open enrollment, we will have some impact on our general fund revenues, is that true? And I, I hope that each year, we can have this piece of paper like this, because I think it helps. We've kind of just let them in because we have the space, and it's been a revenue benefit, but now we have, we've kind of met, rubber meets the road now, where we have to ask ourselves, we have to begin to spend this money on teachers, or, or decline it, or do something.
Exactly, and I think that's the philosophy of the district, moving forward, especially at the high school level, on being able to have a larger number of high school students come in, to the fact that we can then potentially turn around and take that open enrollment money and apply it to hiring. enrollment money and apply to hiring teachers to offer more class selections and benefit our resident, you know, our resident students, so.
And these figures will be a part of your staffing plan that will show up?
Yes.
And that's a really good point, and we've talked about that. When we get down to the end, you know, in April, May, and we know exactly how many more seats we might have available, and the reality is, if you could let in, you know, another 10 students, right about, there's another teacher we can hire. And we do have to look at those terms, as long as it's, you know, managing our class sizes and, and not, you know, so the bottom line is, how can we use the revenue piece to benefit resident students?
Going down from 309 to 10 or 25 is.
Well, no, that's just new ones, so we still have.
I realize that, but it's, it's starting a slope.
Yeah.
But we don't have much choice when you look at Glacial Drumline and how packed it is. I mean, we don't have any, so that's always the problem. I mean, we're reaching, because, because we are increasing residents, that's, that's an issue. And I, I think that's an important balance. I don't want to pack our classes just so we're planning, and we have reached a point where we have to be very thoughtful about it, because we do want to serve our, our own kids well, is what we're here for.
No, I don't disagree with it, I just, we have to realize that we've been, we've been living on short-term.
Well, in the past, we had a real problem with, what we did is we looked at class size, we looked at those numbers, and that's all we looked at. We weren't really doing a good job of looking at the space that's available. Now we have a system, and Jared implements that extremely well, and looks at, do we have room in that building? And then we actually rewrote the policy, so it was very clear that that was a factor, because that was not being done in the past, we just basically took people who applied. So I really commend this district for continuing to seriously address and meet the needs of our resident students, as well as trying to fairly allow open enrollment. I mean, if I were open enrolling, I don't want to open enroll into a class of 35 for a college rep English class either, I don't want to make, so, again, I think we've done a really nice job of using a systematic approach to this, and it makes the decision-making so much easier, just.
That policy has addressed our local students and class size, but, but we've kind of had the, the revenue factor in the, in the background.
It's been the foot on the gas pedal previously, you bet.
I do approve of the new 2014, 2015 open enrollment seat sets, is that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then on to new business, and the first item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of a contract for Director of Human Resources. So I request a motion to approve a two-year administrative contract for Nicole Thibodeau as Director of Human Resources as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, you're welcome.
You have to be really moving to get a motion. Don't people feel good about something?
That's right. The next item.
Warm up the room next week.
It was pretty warm when we first came in.
Jared was a little warm, he turned the heat down. Kevin Chad, illustrated, should be your first topic, your first administrative.
Okay, next item is discussion and possible approval of a contract for the Facilities Coordinator, and we've discussed this before also. Can I have a motion for approval of a 2014, 15 Facilities Coordinator contract for Mark Scullion as presented?
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the next item, we have a motion for approval of a 2014, 2015 Information Systems and Technology Coordinator contract for Bill Herman as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Future agenda items, anything that jumps out? I think we wrapped up our convention discussion, and we will continue with the communications piece. Future meeting dates are here, we have a meeting tomorrow night on the Teacher Compensation Committee, and then we have a Policy Committee meeting on February 5th, in the district office at 6:30. Next, maybe the whole meeting is February 12th.
Can we, again, I haven't looked, it's my fault, Joyce about when the, there's, there's a lot of the policy stuff, so I just want to warn you, there's, there's a long list, it's not necessarily huge amounts of material, but it's a long list, so you're going to have to look at that.
Yeah.
Do we know when that's?
It will be live Friday. A lot of it's on there already, Joyce has done a great job, and so, she's just waiting for me to do my piece now, to finish it off.
I know, I know.
I knew you were worried about when I was going to get up there and be live.
I don't know. But, yeah, I just, right, there's work, there's, you just need to look at the list.
Yeah.
Don't get sick.
So, so for the business, can I have a motion for adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I know, I know. What?